Uh, I guess the only thing that was kind of, the salaries had kind of gone up some. And basically the repairs and utility bills went down some on that. We had to have a few cost savings along the balance.
Let me interrupt you sir, a minute here. Um, I think I talked with Mr. Clive it earlier in the week, not to, to basically you. There was no printout of, um, the changes or anything, any highlights or changes or?
Well, I looked at that, actually, there'd be so many of them that go up a little bit. There's no, no significant changes. Everything is probably within a...
A few thousand.
Maybe a ten percent thing, but I mean, I'd be glad to do that.
What is this salary increases?
It's probably that they're going in.
Just about everyone who requested, um, you know, more of a cost of living kind of thing is, it's not like everybody got a ten percent raise because of board and guy. It's just that we had some people who hadn't had raises in a while, um, request like, maybe five hundred here, thousand here, or there. Nothing significant, um, anybody's raises. But we did have a few increases. But it's, again, it's, um, that's not really anything that contributed to an increase in the budget and expenses.
Everything we had allocated for the landfill is included with that too. You know, we had the repairs from the truck that don't come out of here.
Okay, so...
Yeah, yeah, now the repairs on landfill did go down.
Repairs did, but, you know, none of the purchases went anywhere.
Yeah, and that's the biggest thing. You know, kind of look through this, all things, any major changes anywhere through, um, general operating accounts. Um, but the main thing we're gonna need to work on is our capital expenditure, what you want to do with that.
Yeah, that's what you're talking about.
I guess number one, whether y'all want to get the GO bond. If you do, then we need to figure out where we want to spend and what capital purposes we want to make a deal.
Let me, let me add something real quick, just for the record. The budget is balanced, um, now, without the GO bond, okay? And we talked and said that it may be a good idea in order to make capital expenditures, um, some capital purchases, uh, and do some things that will improve, um, the county long-term and make some, actually make some, um, savings long-term that we want to consider getting that GO bond. And, you know, it's really up to you guys. If we don't get the GO bond, we still can continue forward. We just won't be able to make some of the capital purchases that, you know, everybody said that, everybody agreed that we want to try to get.
Yeah, we do.
And he's going to provide a list of, if everybody tries to prioritize, like, we're looking at, um...
Red, yeah, the red one, the committee type with that. Put a hole on one of the reds.
Some general equipment for the county, fire stations, um, some purchases for the fire stations. So we have quite a few of those things that we want to consider. But again, if we don't want to do that, that's up to you guys, uh, and, and...
This here was highlighted, this stuff you...
Pretty much one of the committee did not want the fund at this time.
You say what now?
The administrative committee has looked at this one time before. Those ones that the county put off, she could pull counsel.
We wasn't gonna buy all this stuff at one time?
No, it's just...
It's not even requested.
Yeah, they just all...
Everyone requested a bunch of different things. They, they made a request.
So you saying we can balance the budget, we gonna be able to balance the budget if we don't borrow the money?
But you won't be able to buy none of this stuff.
I understand, yeah. But you saying the budget's a balance?
Yeah.
But we gonna have nothing to play with?
No.
Well, you need, my opinion, you need to do a bond so you can buy some of this. There's some of this stuff you need to buy.
And somewhere you go have to buy.
Yeah. I'm not sure, you go have to buy.
Fund ten will balance with no capital purchases. If you want to make capital purchases, then we have to do a GO bond by.
Now, we didn't do any last year, did we? We, we stayed with the capital purchases from last year's budget.
We did a GO bond last year.
We did a GO bond.
We don't want the money, man. We definitely didn't buy no equipment.
And that, and that's why, that's why we have to be very careful. If, if we're gonna look at that GO bond, we have to be very careful to, um...
You buy the equipment.
To buy, we say we're gonna buy with it. And, and we can't just, you know, let that money get pulled away. We gotta buy what we say we're gonna buy.
We could maybe put that money to the side somewhere.
Well, I'm not, I'm not...
The GO bond, you, you have to buy.
What I'm saying is put that money to the side to be, spend on that equipment.
Yeah, GO bond.
Yeah, but we didn't, yeah.
What I'm saying is, Richard, put that money to the side to spend it on that equipment where they give it a general fund and spend everywhere else.
Yeah. Well, I'm, last year we had to get a GO bond that was not tactics in, but we're putting in the general fund.
Well, they didn't, they didn't tell us that when we put it on last year.
How much is that GO bond, a million?
Yeah, millions.
And we have to pay it back by how, when?
Did we pay the one back from last year?
No, they paid it all back, yeah. You paid it back over a period of time, over a period of time.
Now, this one's scheduled for about eight years. We designated twenty point five mils for bond repayment.
How, how can we foresee in the future where we don't have to keep getting GO bonds? How can we set ourselves up for that in the future?
Um, it's gonna be a while before we ever...
Let me, let me, let me answer that.
...by capital purposes.
Not only is it gonna be a while, but it, it's gonna take, um, from all of us, a commitment to, to reduce some of our spending, um, in a lot of different aspects. It's also gonna take some smart spending where, for instance, we're looking at one of the, you know, doing something with the fire stations, where it may cost us a few hundred thousand dollars now, but it'll save us fifty to sixty, what we, like seventy thousand dollars a year down the road. That's smart spending where we can save money down the road. We gotta keep in mind that, we gotta, we have to operate, but at the same time, we gotta operate intelligently so that we can start saving money. It's gonna take a little bit of time. And as we go, and as we continue to make some savings and continue to make smart investments with the money, then we'll clear some space for ourselves. We also gotta make sure we're getting our revenue. We haven't gone over that part of the budget. But we gotta make sure we're getting our revenue, um, that we're supposed to be getting, such as hospitality taxes, such as, um, the stuff we make in the landfill, or the money we're supposed to be making there. We gotta make sure we're getting that revenue, um, properly. So it's gonna take some time. But, but we have some things we need to make some adjustments to that's gonna start eventually getting us to a new GO bond.
We ain't got no trouble with the GO.
At this one.
Well, we can't do everything right now. We got, until we have more money coming in, a way to operate.
But, but there's, there is a concern out there, and, and we didn't consider that, that if we continue to get GO bonds, I'm just reiterating, and then we don't spend the money on what it's supposed to be spent on. We, we have to make sure we spend our money on what we designated for.
I believe if you vote and have three reasons to spend it for a GO bond, and you don't spend it for that, I believe you can go to jail or, I might be wrong, I believe it's against the law. I believe it's the law, we got the...
Oh, you ain't put your foot in your mouth now. You saying if we get the GO bond, it gonna use for, be used for that purpose only?
That's right.
That's what, that's...
That's what it's for, huh?
If, if we get a GO bond, we need to make sure...
Well, ain't that law, but when they get it...
What'd you say last year? Y'all had it where it was exempt or something?
It wasn't exempt.
To be federal tactics exempt, then it has to go toward capital purchases.
Well, it wasn't written in that way last year, what we passed last year.
I think it was kind of loosely written, Buzz, I think the only thing that we had in there was the front end loader.
We were missing...
When y'all, when y'all, y'all started on that, what, April, May, last year?
That, that American...
When would it start on?
That was started on April, May, last year. Yeah, we got around April, I believe, what? Yeah.
All right, we already paying on one bond, paying one bond back. If we borrow this here, we gonna be able to pay both of them, but make payments on both of them bonds?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can probably... We got some more bonds you still paying on too.
Yeah, we got four bonds.
Yeah. We have four, five to pay on.
What's those bonds per month you paying on, right?
The total payment's like one point four million a year. What, we, we have that set of like twenty point five mils is designated for debt or service. And we have to spend that twenty point five for debt. So that's really to keep, not generate one point four million. Total payments around one point four.
It's gonna be put in right, and if we borrow the million dollars, it's gonna be for the equipment use on.
For what we, we're gonna go over now? Some of these?
And we do a tax exemption on this one.
But the bond that you borrowed last million dollars on, that went into general fund.
Yeah, it's really the kind of reimbursement.
You may have bought some stuff with it, you may not. You probably bought some things with it.
But what Buzz is saying, that money need to be used for what they say it'll use.
Yeah, we need to use it for equipment because we need it. We, we need, you got a lot of needs here.
We need to make sure it's trying to get some of it.
But this here, but that million dollars won't cover all this.
It ain't gonna cover everything on there, but you get, you get some of it though. And this is here, all this, some of this is won't now.
Well, I'm gonna be honest with you, like some of these fire departments, some of these fire departments...
We took out. We had every fire department took out every time.
They ain't getting less.
One of the priorities is that front, front end load ain't, we know that's a priority.
Yeah.
Let, let, let me, let me just say this about, um, about some of these things. A lot of these are gonna be insurance covered, here. So when it says eight hundred forty-four thousand, balance, as far as what we're looking at actually spending, it's a lot less than that. Because you got a lot of stuff that's insurance covered, you got, um, some of these expenditures that we can reduce quite a bit. And like that front end loader, for instance, that two hundred seventy-five thousand is not a hard figure. That's what we kind of came up with, um, based on making sure it was enough. It could be a lot less than that, and it will be a lot less than that, to be honest with you. Uh, walk-in floor trailer is on this year. That's not even gonna be a part of the bond.
So you think it's gonna cost a million dollars just on the motor base? Two hundred fifty-five dollars?
It's gonna be a whole lot less.
Yeah, that, that was in red.
Yeah.
It's gonna get out.
We definitely need, we definitely need that front end loader now. Because first of all, that was actually promised, I don't know how...
Well, we were borrowing the cities there all the time, and I think the...
It was actually with last year's bond, right? Now, we gotta say that we're gonna use for that. So one thing I, and it's just me, I don't have to go on this, but one thing that I really think we ought to look at is if we get this bond, and the least we can do is go back and get what we said we were gonna get last year, um, with that last one, and that's that front end loader. We, we can't just get another bond and still don't get that front end loader.
Well, if you get that bond, you go down this list and you see exactly what you need to...
And that's why, and that's why, that's why we wanted to work on this today and see if we can prioritize what we, what we gonna get and put it in order. And then as the money, as we decide to use it, then we get it. And then if we spend less on certain, some of these items, then we can go down the list a little further. But we gotta get the stuff on that list. We can't just have that bond and just not use it for profit.
Let, let me ask you a question, Tony and Richard both.
Yes.
With the exception of you been talking about this here right now, I heard you say earlier that we have a balanced budget.
Yes.
What's the difference between, if you balance the budget without talking about this, without the GO bond, the million dollars? So you basically telling me we gonna operate off the same budget we operated off last year with the exception of borrowing a million dollars for a GO bond? Is that the case?
Yeah.
Well, if that's the case, then, all right.
I mean, if we're gonna do any count, count.
No, he, he said it was different. I said, so things went down, some salaries went up.
It's, the, the general amount is about the same.
I don't know what the difference is.
But here's what I heard, that's what I'm, that's my point. Here's what I'm saying, I'm hearing that the bond, that, that the budget is balanced without the million dollar GO bond.
Without the be, well, you don't have a million dollar gas payment this year.
That, that part I get. I'm trying to see how they balance, balance the budget.
Without having the bond, like we did last year? Well, you borrowed a million dollars last year to help balance, I guess, help balance them. But this year you don't have to, you don't have to wait on gas payment.
Last year. All right, here, here's, here's my point. I understand that part. Without borrowing this, you telling me that we, we can balance the budget?
That's what I just asked you.
That's what you're telling me.
Yeah.
If that be the case, then if we got the same money that we had last year, the one we take the money, the million dollars that we were talking about that didn't go into the general fund and, and use it. If we borrowed a million dollars, then why wouldn't we put it in reserve somewhere?
Because it was...
Yeah, yeah, last year we had the million dollar...
That part I get, that part I get, I get. But I'm hearing that there's a balanced budget without borrowing a million dollars.
That's what you're saying, what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying, use it for, use it for hardship. Use it for hardship somewhere. If you got the same money that you had last year...
So you saying don't buy none of that?
Here's what I'm saying. Here's what I'm saying, you saying you got the same money you had last year. Well, if you had a million dollars last year, then take that same money that you hitting by the equipment with, and buy equipment with it, and take this million dollars and put it in reserve. Then you'll have some money when you come up short. If you got the same money, apparently you can't have the same spenders.
Yeah, last year we had an extra million dollars spent, George.
You had how much?
Extra million dollars spent to on the gas line. And I've read the purpose of the GO bond last year.
That part, that part I get you, okay. But now how you balance the budget then with the same budget you had last year?
Because we don't have the million dollar gas payment this year.
Okay, we didn't, but, okay, well then why do you need this million dollars, this GO bond?
Well, that's to purchase equipment.
But what I'm saying, if you got the same money you had last year, and you, and you saying now you don't have the million dollar gas payment, but you got the same money that you had last...
You borrowed that million, you paid the gas payment, everything else is the same.
That part I get. But how are you borrowing, how, how are you balancing the budget without, and then say you need an extra million dollars? If you had the same money, I do get it. You operated the money last, you operated the budget last year on that.
Let me explain then, all right? You got the same budget, right? Uh, we borrowed a million dollars last year. It paid the million dollar gas line, all right? So that's it. Uh, that's what you borrowed that million dollars for. So it's the same thing, the same at the end. Uh, we the same right now. We gonna borrow that million dollars to buy equipment.
Instead of buying a gas line?
Yeah.
Right, but here's my point.
Man, we waiting, you don't get it, aren't you?
I do get it. If you don't need that million dollars, then why you gonna borrow that million? If you saying you had the same budget, you don't pay...
They don't need the money to balance the budget, but if they plan on getting into this equipment, they got that.
That's right.
Well, if you had a million dollars last year, where did that million dollars go? Wouldn't it part of your budget last year?
Gas line.
Okay, you don't have the gas line payment this time, where did that, where did that?
You ain't borrowed the money yet.
The, the budget cut in the back of the...
We got an extra million dollar coming in on the revenue side, but you borrowed a million.
Right, that part I get. You got, so you borrowed a lot, you borrowed another million dollars, you gonna borrow another million dollars to make up for that, and you don't have the gas line payment this time.
But you gonna buy a equipment payment.
You gonna buy a equipment. But if you didn't have a million dollars to pay, here's my point, if you didn't have a million dollars to pay last time, then why would you borrow another million dollars? If you ain't got, if you done paid it off, and you ain't got to pay this year.
They took the million dollars last year, they bought to pay the gas line off. This year they ain't got, that's paid off. So what they saying, when they borrowed that million this time, started paying the gas line off, they gonna use it for some of this stuff.
That part I get. How, that, what I'm saying is, if you got, if you saying you operating off the same budget, you saying you got the same budget, you saying you can balance the budget without borrowing a million dollars?
That's what he telling you.
It ain't, we can't buy nothing.
Yeah, the budget is balanced, we just no extra for these expenses.
It should, it should have the balance of the budget, so it couldn't be the same thing.
Well, that's, that's what I'm, it can't be the same thing. I'm hearing that it's the same thing, but it can't be the same thing.
Okay, let me, let me clarify the words then.
There you go.
By budget for last year, it was the same amount of money plus a million dollars.
There we go. Now I'm hearing addition, as you say.
Okay, last year there was an addition of a million dollars.
Thank you, that's what I'm looking for.
This year it's the same thing with, hopefully, an addition of another million dollars. I'm sorry, it's just, it's just a word, say the word.
That ain't, that ain't, that ain't what it is. I'm, I'm hearing there's gotta be an addition.
That's what you're saying.
But if you saying you, well, you can't be operating off the same budget.
It's the same without borrowing the million, is what he was saying.
Did he explain to you?
You explained the addition part, I understand the addition part now.
Yeah, I guess easier, when, in the way it be structured here, a general operating account is almost exactly the same amount as it was last year. And I would kind of move it toward the capital expenditure, the fund forty-five, the capital expenditures. And that's for the million dollar payment last year when, along with the GO bond.
But you looking at that payment this year.
Right.
The next one is, is, I'm gonna go and start paying it back on the gas.
You can't have the same budget then, not, you can't have the same budget without the million dollars.
And now, I bet it's ten years.
What you think, so you got the million dollars to start paying it back?
Well, okay, so if we're clear with that, then I think, before we go too further, time-wise, I, we need to start prioritizing and just get some of your opinions on it.
What we need to do is go with this budget, and do that later. Because we got to decide whether we wanna get the bond or whatever first, then you go with that probably. Because if you go over there, you ain't gonna have time to go over none of this today.
Well...
Unless everybody, something...
The, the budget, okay, so just to tell you, the budget, there, there's nothing in here that's extreme or that's, you know, um...
Ain't nobody taking no pay cut.
Nobody taking no pay cut. Um, there's, there's a few additions on salaries, but again, it's nothing significant. Um, we have some positions that are closing out, some positions that are opening up. It, it, it's all equaling out to about the same when it comes to total salaries. And again, we are, but it's a little bit more.
You got to raise taxes.
We don't have to, and we don't have to raise taxes. Only thing is we all gonna have to spend, save some money when it comes to some of our expenses. Now, the two major areas that we're looking at saving is repairs and utilities. Now, let me explain that before we say that we're not gonna make the necessary repairs. That's not it. The repairs and maintenance, the way we have it currently, every department has their own budget for maintenance. And generally, they go out and purchase things, and they purchase, um, equipment and things that they need, uh, or they, or they get people to do work for them, and it adds up to a certain amount. And they do that a lot of times without confirming with Tony Calder, who's over the maintenance. If we move that budget to him, then we're gonna save a lot more money that way because...
He gonna monitor.
He's gonna, not only is he gonna monitor it, but let's say you order, you know, twenty screws for a project, and you only use eight. Then he goes out and order twenty screws for a project, he goes out and order twenty screws, you spend a lot more money on a lot of excess thing. What he, all he has to do is order fifty, and then it's gonna cost less, and he'll have enough for everyone. And that's the kind of thing that we're gonna do, we're gonna move that to him, consolidate it, because he doesn't have an extra person that he didn't have last year. I mean, he got the person, and that person has a truck. So he's able to monitor and, and be over all the repairs and save a lot more money. He, he suggested that to me, and he, he brought me some evidence that, how he can save a lot more money doing it that way.
Tony Calder, yes.
So he would take the role of as a procurement officer there.
Well, not really procurement, but he's gonna buy the maintenance equipment and then the materials and that kind of stuff instead of buying it separately and then a lot of it going away.
Budget part of it.
He's gonna handle the budget part of it, under him. And we probably save about thirty percent to forty percent on repairs and maintenance, doing it that way. And so that's where some of the savings is coming in. With utilities, Richard and I are, are looking at, um, first of all, some of these places are just using too much. Um, and we're also looking at consolidating some of our accounts, especially with the fire departments. They have some special, uh, accounts with different phones, stuff like that. We're looking at consolidating a lot of different things, um, with these different buildings, so that we don't pay quite as much. And we're also gonna, you know, if, if people want those, and I've made it very clear to each department here when we talk, if you want to make sure that your people get these cost of living type raises, the one percent here, the two percent there, then you're gonna have to take it upon yourself. And, and we're gonna monitor you to make sure that you're not using, overusing utilities. And, you know, be responsible, cut the lights off, don't leave the air conditioning going all night long. We've had these problems over the past years. And so we're gonna make sure that people, um, if they want those raises, they're gonna have to take care of where, of where they are. Treat it like their own. And so that's another place we're saving a lot more than you may realize on some of these utilities. Consolidation and just taking care of what we got. So that's where the decrease in expenditures have come, the increases come in the salaries, and it all has evened out.
Got a question.
Yes.
Are we going up on M S D trash?
We are, okay, so this right here, and this is what I wanted to also let you know, the revenue side of it, now there, there are three ways that we're gonna, four ways that we're gonna increase revenue slightly. But then, and we're looking for more ways. First thing is with, over the, at the transfer station. Uh, we are gonna, on the M S W, and the reason why we're not gonna really catching a flag for that is because Lee County's going up on us.
They go up on us every year.
They go, every year they go up.
So like y'all be there to meet, before the meeting, but go ahead.
Um...
We had a...
Well, I'm, what were you? We, we did have a, uh, the administrative committee, we, we met first before we did this, so, um, the Lee County goes up, and then the, the city, and whoever gets trash goes up on their customers regardless. We're the only ones not going up.
I think you don't want us going up.
They go on the prices, they, they charge it more.
What are you talking about going up?
Uh, we're talking about a dollar and a half, two dollars a ton.
Um, they used to go up on us about two and a half percent, Lee County, and then we kind of structured ours to go up about two and a half.
And the seating goes up every year anyway, whether we do or not.
So the ones we give them go up, the ones we give the two go up. We're the ones stuck in the middle who never go up, and so we're losing money on both ends. So we could, we gotta, we should at least go up with the trend of everyone else around us, the ones that's supplying us and the ones we give ours to. So we're gonna belong with them, and that's why we're going up on that. So that's one way, um, that we're gonna increase revenue. Uh, the second way is collections. You know, um, we have, it, it's been tough, but we're, we're, we're cleaning up all of our accounts with the landfill, with the, um, you know, we have all these different cans and boxes out here, and in years past, we haven't collected, we haven't got any social security numbers or any, uh, identification numbers, employment numbers. We're getting all that, and we're going to be, um, doing a much more thorough job of collections. And so that's gonna go up. And, and we found some areas already. We found some customers who haven't paid in years. And, and so, you know, we're, we're cleaning all that up right now. That's definitely gonna go up. Um, we're also looking at hospitality terms. We are, I'm still waiting on, um, the lawyer from the Department of Revenue to give me a complete guide on how we could request that they help us collect. Uh, in most counties, what they do is they collect through Department of Revenue when they have hospitality taxes. When they pay their other taxes, they gotta pay their hospitality tax. If they don't pay it, then Department of Revenue takes their license, and that gets enforced by SLED. So we don't have to worry about being the ones that go out and ask for the tax. They collect it at the Department of Revenue. So that's gonna, um, that's gonna be a slight increase for us as well. Um, and the, the last thing is, I think maybe two years ago, we voted on the, the fire companies, I mean, the, the fire stations, the fire department billing, um, the insurance company. And we haven't been doing that. And Moses, you know, he gave me an estimate of about another, uh, eighty, eighty-five to a hundred and five thousand that we're losing a year on not doing that. And so, you know, we're gonna implement that. Now, it is in the, the budget ordinance, the budget ordinance. These, these, uh, collection agencies, the ones who help you collect, they want you to have something in your ordinance. Now, we had the budget ordinance, I'm gonna submit that to them. If that's not good enough, they might have to bring it back to you to actually put it in a, in a, in a county ordinance outside of the budget ordinance. You've already voted on doing it, you just have to put it in the ordinance.
I think this ordinance, last ordinance, we just had the, be able to charge for residential fires and commercial fires. But this one, we gonna add in charge for vehicle fires.
And again, we're not charging the people, we're charging the insurance companies who already are willing to pay it based on, you know, getting premiums or whatever kind of coverage.
Yeah, my vehicle fire and everybody's...
And that's why...
Yeah, and I don't, need to look through the insurance policy, see it on mine, but Moses has thought one hundred and fifty.
And, and housing is usually a hundred and fifty. I mean, I'm sorry, and the cars usually a hundred and fifty per fire, houses usually about five hundred, businesses sometimes up to a thousand. Um, and depending on the homeowners, it could be more than five hundred. But that's ju, generally what it is. We haven't been collecting it since this has been voted on, and so we're gonna start collecting that. and so, we're gonna start collecting that, but again, I'm waiting on to hear back from the collection agencies to see if, um, if that budget ordinance is good enough for them to, to go ahead and, uh, start helping us collect. So those are four ways we're gonna increase revenue, it's not even reflected in here yet, so we do have a slight cushion that, that we can, um, look forward to, and then again, just, you know, just general savings and, and being smart about how we spend our money, uh, is another way, so, that's where we're able to balance it, and, and still have a little bit of, I'm not gonna say wiggle room, cause I don't wanna us to get comfortable, but we do have a little bit of room.
We should say something with the landfill with our trucks, when trucks get repaired too.
Now, once we, and, and, and it takes to bring it up, the fifth thing is, um, we have been spending some money, uh, contracting someone privately, um, on taking trash to Lee County. Now, we were paying four fifty before, a load, four hundred fifty dollars every time makes a trip to Lee County. It costs us about, about one eighty to two hundred per load that we take, but we didn't have the truck to do it, and we found somebody to do it for three hundred, so that's actually a savings right there, that we're already gonna start seeing from last year, but, once we get the trailer fixed, then we can put the other truck in the road, and once we did that, then we'll save about a hundred dollars a trip from what we're paying now.
How many trips they make down there?
Tony, how come that trailer hadn't been fixed by now, cause it.
No, it's one we had to, we had to buy.
Before we got here, that trailer was, um.
I don't know about that one, I think we did get that one fixed, but the, the new one is the one that just burned up maybe about a month ago, was it, month and a half ago?
Burned up a while back, but they just ordered it about three or four weeks.
Okay, and it's, how long it take before it get in?
I believe last time, it took about five or six weeks.
Okay.
It was, we ordered that twenty fifth.
Yeah. Well, it don't take about.
Sure paid for forty-eight thousand.
Remember you all voted for twenty-two thousand?
It was seventy thousand, but it sure paid for forty-eight.
And, and, and that's also gonna come out of this as well, that, that's gonna be scratched here, that, that seventy thousand, so that's something else we don't have to buy off of this list, but yeah, once we get that in, that trailer in, you know, we'll save, again, another hundred dollars a load, and we make about thirty-five trips a week, and so, that guy makes about, how many does that guy do, about twelve? Maybe a little more than that, isn't it?
I don't know, he's, he's not as bad as Renza, I mean, he's.
Yeah, but he, how many loads does he do a week? I think he does about, about twelve loads a week.
Yeah, that, oh, something. He at least makes two trips a day, I would think, not three.
Yeah, he, he does about two.
He got fees and.
He does two trips a day sometimes a week, so that's saving about almost a thousand, um, twelve hundred dollars a week, that's another sixty thousand a year, just off of that, changing him, um, getting that done, and again, you make a purchase of about two hundred thousand, but you're saving one out, and I turned that, that's just fixing the trailer, but you're gonna save a lot more money, and then renting the one from the city, I'm not sure how much that, like, runs a month, do you remember that?
We don't really rent from the city, I think, they just, I mean, talk about front end loader.
Front end loader.
Yeah, they'll loan it to us, but I know one time they got tired of loaning us.
Yeah, I, I thought we had, we hadn't had borrowed it for a long time.
I thought we paid for that.
Yes, they did.
Everybody tore up or something.
Yeah, we get the free bill.
Well, we can't expect that too much longer, uh, on that end, but.
The daily tax, and the fees increases and all?
No, I, the, well, we had discussed the five dollars on the, um, container fees, and, but we haven't made a decision on implementing that yet.
Only other parts, you, Ren's supposed to update me on the ambulance fees, we usually would schedule out what medical care pays. He's checking on that, and I'll be a person with it.
So the ninety dollars on each parcel, that's not gonna increase?
No, they'll be the same.
Well, right now, he must be short, cause ain't nobody working that lot a couple day for the ambulance service.
Somebody asked me, and I'm gonna bring it to y'all, did anybody say something about councilman talking about increasing the rental property fees?
I was just asking, ninety dollars on each parcel?
They want none of that, they want no truth.
Okay.
That's, that be.
Raise taxes.
I mean, somebody asked me, and I threw my hand hurt, but I'm running it up.
No, we don't have any, there, there, we have no increase with tax or any expenditures from general, general public.
So you gonna be to balance the budget?
No taxes.
No tax. Rich, you?
Yeah, that's, that's where I'm, I'm.
You got the book now, don't tell me till we late, we.
You don't tell me that either, now, I mean.
I do have a reserve.
Right now, we still looking pretty good on reserve, um, we don't have any reserve, that's why we're trying to, that's why I don't wanna, although we're having some savings.
Well, you can't put that, you can't put some of that on reserve, some of that million dollar bond?
No, 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 we, we wanna.
But, but if we can save some money here and gain some money there in this budget a little bit.